Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order at this time. So you start all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate. And Mr. Dick, we can see this is not fair enough as this evening.
Sam.
Hello, my son.
She's aging.
Again?
Go ahead. Heavenly Father, Son of one oh three. As for man, his days and his grass is the flowers of the field, and he flourishes. But the wind will pass over it, and this place will know of it no more. But the mercy of the Lord is forever and forever. So Heavenly Father, with this comes realization. Our days here are short. And in our robe ahead on this council, give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for the wonderful citizens of this town. And in the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and Sarah Proudie, the minutes of the December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, please. Everybody has time to review. All right, have a motion to accept the minutes presented.
I'll make them up for yourself.
All favor say. Do you have a question?
No, I just make one over there.
All right, okay. Good question.
With that question?
With that. All right, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. For the opening meeting, the city council may not deliberate on items presented under the agenda item. All presentations are subject to a five-minute time limit. Anyone here, not on the attended seat, that wishes to speak? Mr. Art.
Just to take advantage of your time. I'm just here to support, for the support of the water project. I just wanted to, I saw it was on the agenda tonight. I appreciate y'all picking up the torch and running with it. There's been a lot of work done on this water project. I can promise you, there's no groundwater in Southern Wells County. There's nothing with Eden, there's nothing with Cristobal, there's nothing with Eldorado, there's nothing with Miles. We've looked in all these places, and we came to, there's nothing in Bronx in particular. We've looked through all these places, and this is what we came up with, secure the water feature. Y'all have made modifications to it, done a wonderful job with that. I hope you keep running with it, and I just wanted to take a moment to just, just to voice my support for that. And I appreciate y'all's work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, discuss, consider, or take action on awarding the bid for a collection agency to collect outstanding utility bills and municipal court fines and fees to McCreary, Valesa, Brad, and Alan.
Well, we've gone out to bid to start collection services for utility bills and municipal fines and fees, court fines and fees. We have approximately a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in utility, outstanding utility bills, and a hundred and forty-five in outstanding municipal court fines. We received three bids, we evaluated them, and our choices, McCreary, Solay, Brad, and Alan. On the utility bills, you split them up. Utilities is, it's gonna be thirty percent of what our, our charge is, so they'll take thirty percent. On municipal court fines and fees, it's different. It's not a percentage. It's gonna be a fee added to the fine. So, I believe it's gonna be thirty dollars. So if there's a fine for a hundred dollars, a speeding ticket, or something like that, they actually add it to the fine. So it'll be a hundred and thirty dollars. So it actually takes nothing away from what we're owed on the fine. Basically, it's a no-cost contract. The utility part, it does cost us thirty percent of whatever it is. If there's a utility bill that's owed a hundred dollars, then they get thirty percent if they collect. So, but this is also part of our audit funding, when you need to get a collection agent to start processing these accounts receivable that are owed to us.
Ten years ago, when I was on council, Robert Burgess came to me. Each tax agency had a different delinquent tax attorney firm.
Right.
She made this suggestion, we all get on board with the same firm. And it was this firm. And they've done an outstanding job of collecting related taxes. And I speak highly of this firm.
Excellent.
So all the industry now are on with them.
Yes. In point of events.
Any other problems, questions? Yes? Good with it? All right, motion to accept and award the bid for collection agency to collecting outstanding utility bills and municipal court fines and fees to McCreary, Valesa, and Alan.
I'll make that motion.
That a second? All favor say.
All right.
Thank you. All right, discuss, consider, or take action on awarding the bids to Hibs and Todd to conduct a survey of airport property in order to re-enter the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Texas dot routine maintenance program.
Texas dot has a program for, it's an aviation program. And they call it the LAMP agreement. It's the repair and maintenance agreement. What Texas dot does when you enter this grant is they pay half of your maintenance costs. So if we're replacing a fire hydrant, then, and say a fire hydrant costs us eight hundred dollars, then we would pay for the fire hydrant, and then take the bill, and send it to Texas dot, and they reimburse us for four hundred dollars. So it basically cuts our maintenance agreements, or our maintenance cost in half. If we're replacing a light, changing from regular lights to LED light, then they, basically, it's half price from what we were paying. Anyway, so we went out, took three bids, and one was, well, we ended up going with Hibs and Todd, because they could do it when we needed it. They were qualified, and, you know, we can get that survey done, and go ahead and submit that survey to Texas dot, which would interest in the program.
What kind of number did we call? What did they have to do, sir?
Three thousand dollars.
What did the other bids come in at?
One was six, and one was five. Forty-five, something like that. We took the low bid per se. Technically, it's professional services, so you're supposed to look at the actual service provider, not so much the price. But they were all qualified, so, equally, so it didn't surprise.
No questions? Is there any comment? All right, motion to award the bids to Hibs and Todd to conduct a survey on the airport property in order to enter the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Texas dot routine maintenance program.
How many pushers also can do it?
All favor say aye. All right, city council, by here, and update on the Abilene-Ballenger water project. Engineer Mr. Ken Martin.
Mr. Mayor, name of the council, I'm Ken Martin, the deputy for Martin, and Tom in the last month, that it did a good idea to bring the council up today on the project, the Abilene water project. And I know some of the council members are relatively new as to when this project started. Four years ago, think about when the project started. As Mr. Art said, we looked at a lot of potential additional water sources for the city of Ballenger. And we looked for groundwater, we went and talked to the city of Coleman, we went and talked to a number of people trying to find additional water to the city of Ballenger. What we ended up with is an agreement, actually, the city of Ballenger negotiated an agreement with the city of Abilene to have access to all of Abilene's water supplies, which includes not just the Ivy water supply, but their Fort Phantom, the Hubbard Creek water supply, as well as possibly Kingdom, and if they build Seager Bidge, you have access to that also. I don't know how many of you actually realize that or not, but that, in my thinking, secures Ballenger water's future for a number of decades, as long as you're connected to them. Now, as long as there's water in Ivy, you'll continue to get water from Ivy, but you'll buy water from Abilene and from Millisview, because you also negotiated an agreement with the Millisview Dual Water Supply Corporation that you used to purchase five hundred acre feet, that was the minimum, or actually, the take or pay was five hundred acre feet per year. And you negotiated, because Millisview wanted some additional water, they negotiated that down, a hundred and fifty acre feet. Well, the price of water from Abilene, I believe, is thirty-six cents, I believe that's right, as compared to a dollar forty-six from Millisview, that's, those are round numbers. But Ballenger will save, just from on that reduction, about fifty thousand dollars a year, just in water costs. Now, the council has gone ahead and authorized, by the way, once we were selected to do this project for the city, that was four years ago, then we made a grant application to the Texas Water Development Board. The city of Abilene didn't agree to do this for nothing, obviously. But what you brought to the table was designing a pipeline that would allow you to access all of Abilene's supplies, because as it stands right now, Abilene cannot furnish you water from their other supplies. The only water they can furnish you is from the Ivy reservoir. And it wasn't that long ago that the Ivy reservoir, as you know, was very low, and even had the potential for some people thought to go dry. And there was even discussion at one point, the city of Abilene, that if Ivy goes dry, can you furnish us some water? And their comment was, we can furnish some treated water. Because they do not have a pipeline connecting their raw water supplies to their Ivy pipeline. If you'll remember that Ivy pipeline that Abilene installed, it was a fifty-three mile, thirty-six inch pipeline that was installed, gosh, almost twenty years ago. We designed that for the city of Abilene, and helped them get that installed. And then Ballenger was able to get a tap off of the Ivy pipeline. I think it was a ten-inch line, Randy probably can speak to that, but there's a ten-inch line, I think, that furnishes Ballenger right now with water off of that Ivy line. But if it went dry, if Ivy went dry, then the only water Abilene could get to you would be treated water out of their south side water treat plant. So the only line that is missing in that connection is from their Grimes Water Treat Plant, which is down in the center of Abilene, out to their south side plant, which is called the Hardeston Water Treat Plant. It's about twelve miles, going through the center of Abilene. So you can imagine what all is involved there. But we made a grant application on behalf of the city of Ballenger to provide the planning, the acquisition, and the design. The planning, which is a lot of the work that's already been done. The acquisition, there are easements that have to be procured in order to get not just the Abilene pipeline done, but included in that was either beefing up the line that you have connected to Ivy right now, but if my understanding is, the ten-inch line, if all of your reservoirs are dry, that the ten-inch line will not furnish all the water that Ballenger needs. And so that was part of the project, too, is to upgrade that line, or connect at a different location. Whenever Abilene's storage tank, their intermediate storage tank gets low, I know the pressure that Ballenger has is limited, and the amount of water that you get is reduced. And so that was one part of the project, was also looking at either connecting at a different place on the Ivy line. But the big part of it is the, the Abilene pipeline is providing them with the design, the planning, the acquisition, and the design, including the environmental, all of the design work in order for Abilene to be in a position to install the pipeline for that twelve miles. Now, we're talking about a big construction project, it might be twenty-five, thirty million dollars. There are pump stations involved. Now, Ballenger's not paying that, all of that. You pay a percentage, in your agreement with Abilene, you pay a percentage. In other words, if they build the pipeline for thirty million gallons a day, and you wanted ten percent, three million gallons a day, then you would pay ten percent. I believe that's the way that's written, isn't it, Pat? You negotiated contract with Abilene, signed the contract with Abilene, that allows Ballenger to tap into all of Abilene's water reservoirs, including the future one if they build that. And then you sign an agreement, reducing the amount of water that you had to take from Millisview, you saved me about fifty thousand dollars a year. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project, as far as what's being proposed. We can still make some changes in there. One thing we cannot change, and that is connecting the two Abilene plants with raw water. Because that's the only way you can get raw water from Abilene, is connecting Grimes to the south side water plant. And that was really the carrot that you gave Abilene, in order for them to agree to give you access to all of their waters, that you would design that pipeline from Abilene Grimes to the south side water. Now, I know that was fast, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project. We're really getting close for you to getting your money when we make the grant application. I'm sure you remember this, but the city of Ballenger was funded about a two-point-four million dollar grant, and a million dollar loan, and I think the initial interest rate is one-point-four-six percent interest rate. And so for the first two years, because it'll take, it'll take two years to do everything that has to be done. There's a lot of work that has to be done on this project. And, but for the first two years, you're paying the interest, after that, you pay the principal. I'm sure your financial advisor's going over all that with you. But if Millisview continues to want to take water from you, because they took a hundred and forty acre feet, then that just saves you even that much more water because of Abilene charges so much less than that. During the design, we can consider other places, if you want to consider. We went to Coleman one time and talked to them about what might be available, but you can't really change the Abilene, because that's the agreement you made with them, you can't change that pipeline.
So Ken, basically, we're gonna be, we're gonna have to take a million dollar loan, that's right, paid off, the rest will be paid through the grant.
That's right. Two-point-four million grant, million dollar loan, and the, the city has already passed the ordinance, the bond ordinance for the million dollars. Now, I understand, from the financial advisor told me that maybe the newspaper didn't put in the second notice, and so you have to re-advertise that and re-ratify what you've already done, which I think is January the seventeenth, if I'm correct.
January the seventh, next Thursday.
It'll be Thursday at ten o'clock.
Seventeenth?
The seventh. The end of the tenth. Next Thursday.
Okay. Anyway, what you've done before was based upon notifications that you put in the newspaper, and I understand that the second notice, the paper didn't run it, and so you're running it again. That's my understanding, so. But you might check those dates. I know the tenth and the seventeen. The notice I got was that you could beat it again on the seventeenth, but.
Regularly, we're having a special call meeting on the tenth to do this.
Okay, okay. Re-ratify the.
To make it before the fifteenth, right?
Yes. We do have some forms, in order for you to get the funding, we do have some forms, that you have some documents that you have to send to the Texas Water Development Board. One of them's on procurement, that was done several years ago, when you procured the financial advisory, you procured the bond council, and you procured the engineering. And we submitted our engineering agreement with the application, so the Water Board has approved the engineering agreement. And so we have to furnish that agreement, a signed agreement, to the Water Development Board in order for you to get your money.
We were checking here, on this agenda, it says January tenth to ten, and then the notice says January seventeenth.
So is that what we can affect? Correct?
Sure.
The seventeenth will have me.
That's what next, that's.
The current is.
Has Wayne said that?
Not on the tenth.
Yeah, the seventeenth, I understand from the financial advisor would be for you to re-ratify what you already done, and it's passed the ordinance for the, for the one million loan, so that you can also get the two-point-four million grant. And so I'd like to say, part of the documents that they still want before they close the funding is all of the procurement that you did. I think I furnished those forms to Pat, and then our engineering agreement that was included in the application that the Water Board has approved, but we have to get them signed company, so.
We're gonna approve those forms tonight, the mayor to sign up for all of them.
Okay.
And then we have your contract to approve, to go, and that's the next item.
I guess my question.
Yes, sir.
You were talking about two years, you've got two years to finish, do you make it?
There's probably, there's probably close to thirty miles, depending on what site, what Ballenger decides to do on upgrading their line, there could be up to thirty miles of pipeline. And the environmental part of it, which they'll require us to do an archaeological and biological survey, these will take up to a year to get that done, because you have to do all the federal agencies to get, assuming the government's back open, we're, you know, we'll, we'll get it done within a year. But then the design, all of the surveying work, all of the right-of-way acquisition, in other words, there's money in this funding that you got to secure easements. And so all the right-of-way acquisition, all the plans, the specifications, there's two pump stations involved, there's two storage tanks involved, not counting the.
My.
Yes.
Yes. Well, we don't actually go out and acquire the easements.
Well, there's money in, in your funding to get the easements, that's correct.
Correct, but you.
Yeah, we will, we will help you, we will help the city get the easements, that's correct. But that's, that's part of what takes so long, is getting the easements, getting the environmental, doing the plans and specifications, and getting to a point that you can actually take bids on the water project will be at least.
It's a construction project.
Yes.
So see, there's a plan, and then.
And hopefully, you know, we'll continue to get rain, and your, your reservoirs will stay in good shape, and Ivy will stay in good shape, and you won't need this Abilene, but at such time that you do need it, I don't know of another community that has access to this many reservoirs for untreated water. Now, they would sell you treated water, but you want to treat yourself what you're untreated for.
Now, the construction of this, this is just of the design.
That's correct.
This does not include any type of construction.
That's right.
Okay. And we would not be able to start any sort of construction until Abilene got the funding and actually wanted to start construction.
I think it's a combination of Abilene and Ballenger getting construction funding.
Right.
It's not just one or the other. In other words, both have to do that.
That is correct.
And so, because the majority of the construction money is gonna be Abilene for that pipeline at Abilene, because they, they may design it for, you know, want it for thirty million a day, and if you do three million, then you'll be paying ten percent, basically. And that's just an example, that's not the final number. But now, any upgrade that you do on your connections of Ivy line will be yours, unless we get another partner, which we talked about that, and that's not been finalized, to help me pay for that.
Partner with whom?
Well, I'd rather not say right now, that's still.
Are you saying another city?
Yes, and that's somebody else to partner with.
Right, right, right.
You're anyone of mine, sort of thought?
Well, it would come out in the design, I'd really rather not say right now, it's, but there's some other people who are interested.
But it's another city?
Yeah.
Would like to go in with us? What it is, these are totally separate things, okay? What he's talking about today is just the design of the pipeline from North Abilene to South Abilene. Okay, a totally different animal.
No, and also the design for Ballenger, too, for your.
The mid portion is the whole design.
It's the whole design. Yeah, it's the whole design.
Which, yeah, you're talking just the design. Now, a partner, another city.
Partner on the construction.
Would be only on the construction.
Yeah.
Partner only in the cost.
Well, partner on the cost of the construction.
Yeah.
We're just talking design.
We're gonna design a whole truck.
We're gonna design a hundred percent of it, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
And that's, that's our cost for getting the cheaper water out of Abilene.
Right, right.
Okay. Now, construction is whenever Abilene gets ready, and we can get ready, and you, you know, it may be five.
Ready to be financially ready.
Yes. It may be ten years, I mean.
Yeah, ten years, actually, you'll have this note paid off. Well, twelve years, because the first two years, you're not paying on it. You're paying interest, I think first year's seventy thousand dollars, and then the next year, I think, is twenty thousand, and then you start paying on the note. But you're saving fifty thousand just for Millisview a year, so the first two years, you'll actually be making money, but then you'll retire that debt after ten years. After that period of time, probably a great time to be looking at construction. But it is, as you've said, it's got to coordinate with Abilene and Ballenger, but, but the pipeline from, in Abilene, from those two plants will be primarily for Abilene. You'll get some percentage of that, but a small percentage, the pipeline.
Say that again.
Yeah, it'd be a small percent.
Percent of what?
A percent of the construction cost.
Right, right, right.
But then, that's your half, that's your half of the money.
Well, I mean, I mean, it depends on how much water we plan on using.
That's true.
Right, percentage factor.
Yeah, it's a percentage of the total design of that pipe. So if they say, we want thirty million, and you want three million a day? Then you would pay ten percent. I think that's the way that's written. But then on the pipeline from your plant, connecting back over that thirty-six inch line from Ivy?
Right.
Then you're gonna be paying a hundred percent of that construction cost, unless we get a partner to partner with us to save some of that.
Right, right, but that's.
That's construction, that's, that's down the road.
Now, our current line connecting to Ivy, how, how large?
Eighteen.
Ten inch, going to the plant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six inches tap.
Yes, right, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's relatively, I mean, it was kind of an emergency, I know, a small line, but if you're, my understanding, now, Steve, Randy, y'all correct me, but I understand that it's very difficult for you to get all the water you need out of that, out of that line.
Yeah, it all depends on their, their storage tank, you know, if it's low, we don't get like three hundred gallons a minute. If it's full, we get five hundred gallons.
So if we, if we.
If they're pumped, the most we can get is five hundred gallons a minute, that's max.
In a new design, what size are we looking at?
Well, I think on a preliminary basis, we were looking either sixteen or an eighteen, but if you, if you get a big partner, and they say, hey, we want a twenty-four, or whatever it is, and we'll, we'll be able, if you, if we can get a partner on the construction, we can save us some money, and we definitely gonna look for that for a partner.
Right.
Because there are other people, as you probably know, that have been talking to Abilene as far as being a part of the overall West Texas partnership.
Right.
And so.
The Malinger.
Malinger could benefit from that also, getting somebody else to help pay for the construction part of it. But the thing that Randy was saying is, and I know I didn't bring any drawings as far as the, the storage tank that Abilene has is, that's how you get your pressure. If they're not pumping, then it's backfeeding from that tank.
Right.
And so, but they have a tank at Obalo that couldn't feed if you go into Abilene. And that tank at Obalo backfeeds to that station, that intermediate station. So if you tie in, tie in on the, on the pressure side of that intermediate station, then you've got plenty of pressure to do whatever you want to. And that's the reason, in the project, we showed that as one of the alternatives of running your new pipeline, not necessarily where your tap is right now. You can keep that, but running your new line to the, to the tap on, on the north side of that pump station because you get the pressure off of the Obalo tank. I think that Obalo tank's 10 million gallons. But there's, there's a lot to be done. And like I say, when you look at the total construction cost estimate that we turned in, I think it's 25 to 30 million. The vast majority of that is the Abilene cost because they're going to put in a big pipeline. And so, but we still have your pipeline to consider in the design.
Is it 25 to 30 million total cost for the whole project?
For the whole project, something like that.
Some of that's going to...
That's on top of it.
Some of that's going to depend on when they do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so really, we're going to realize cost savings immediately?
Yes.
This year?
That's right.
Because of the contract?
Because of the contracts. And I guess they could, Pat, you correctly on these contracts, you know better than I do, but they go into effect as soon as the city closes their funding so that they, that they no longer have to pay military for 500 acre feet, and you save the 50,000?
Yes, they already, I know these are in effect.
Okay.
It's basically, the only thing at this point, if we somehow lost Abilene, which we've already got the Abilene contract, I guess we didn't get the funding, but it wouldn't go into effect, and then we'd go back to the 500.
Yeah. Yeah, so those contracts have been approved, and been approved. And so, provided we've closed the funding, get everything going, then you, now, the thing that, in Abilene's contract is basically you make up that 140 acre feet with them. But since you're paying a much, a much smaller price, then you're saving the 50,000 a year.
And what military dual agreement is, is that every August one, they tell us whether they want to take more water from us. And then as soon as they do, we notify Abilene to take more water from them. So hopefully, we can ratchet into the Abilene contract completely if military wants more.
Well, the, the goal is to reduce the military dual to nothing. And, and they have demand requirements on them, which cause them to actually buy more water from the CRMWD they're providing. So we're anticipating that our share that we're having to take from military dual to decrease your, and our, the amount that we take from Abilene to increase. So, I mean, we could, your estimated 50,000 a year is based on?
Based on the 140 acre feet. And so that's 360 that you're buying.
Right, so if they...
If they continue to take water back, I mean, I mean, you're paying, the Abilene price is about 20% of the military. So you're going to save 80% every time military takes water and you take water from Abilene.
So these cost savings theoretically, we could take and put towards the bond payment that we're making for the million dollars.
Exactly.
Okay.
No question. But this project is long-term. Obviously, it's been already four, five years in the making. But from the time you actually get the water from Phantom or the Possum Kingdom or anything else Ivy will, will have been by, your guy may not be here, but your kids or your grandkids will be the beneficiaries. And really, I, I don't know another situation like the situation that Malinger has negotiated with Abilene to give you the water security for decades to come.
One more. Once we go to Abilene to build that pipeline, are we going to be held to help maintain it? Or is it solely going to be their pipeline?
It's solely their pipeline.
They'll pay 30% of all fixes at that point?
That's correct. Now, they have in the contract, as you said, as long as Ivy's got water, that's the water you're getting. You're getting Ivy water. If Ivy goes dry, then you'll be getting Phantom water for a higher price. But they're not asking you to maintain that line or those facilities. But it would be in the price of the water. If you want Phantom water, it's not the same price as Ivy.
No, only Phantom, but Cedar Hill or...
It's a different price.
Including their well.
Including each supply that they've got, the way it's written, which is amazing. I was surprised, basically. They would agree with that, but they didn't.
Now, the, the current contract we have with Ivy, military dual, you have a, it's not, you, you have to take 500 acre feet.
Yeah, 360 now.
Right, so you have to take 360 feet.
Correct.
And so you take it, that you're paying for it one way or the other.
That's right.
Okay.
Now, is it a similar contract with Abilene?
Yes. Yeah, so with Abilene, it's 140 acre feet, take or pay.
Okay, so we take it and pay for it, or we don't take it and pay for it anyway?
Yeah, if you don't take it, you're still going to pay for it.
Based on what you said, just the numbers you threw out, 36 cents. You want, you want to take the Abilene water. You do, that gives you a big save.
No question.
Anyway, look at it.
Yeah, if, if military continues to grow, and I know around San Angelo, they continue to grow over there, and if they each year come back to you more, more water, then it's good for the city.
Well, no, I agree. I just, I want to be clear there.
You bet. Yeah, both of those contracts are take or pay. So 100, basically, whenever it military takes more, then you up the amount with Abilene.
Right.
All right, thank you, Ken, for that. City Council may consider discussing proven engineering agreement to take in the market for the design phase of Abilene Malinger Water Project.
Ken, are there any questions out there? What's the timeline of signing this contract?
Well, it really has to be approved tonight because the deadline for closing this is coming up.
We just have some new council members.
Sure. I'm thinking, actually, to tell you the truth, Pat and I didn't talk about this, but when we submitted, when the city selected us, we submitted the agreement. It was approved at that time. We just decided not to sign it until it looked like you were going to get your money. And so it was the, we didn't want to sign that contract and then you not be getting your money. That's basically what we're going to have to do. But we have to furnish that to them, or they can not let you close. And there's some other documents here that if you don't approve it, don't sign it, then they can later close. The deadline for this closing, by the way, is January 31st, or you lose the money.
So we're going to close by the end of this month?
Yes.
That was...
That is the extension. And that's one thing I didn't, one thing I didn't cover with the council is, we had a lot of difficulty getting a gentleman to sign off on the contract with Abilene and with CRMWD. And we negotiated, and we negotiated, and for months, actually, years. You might think, well, why did it take four, five years? You'd be surprised how much has been put into this thing to get it to this point. But the deadline is January 31st, and so we have to sign.
So basically, you're saying that y'all have been working without a contract?
That we, we...
On our behalf?
Yes.
Or this...
Without a signed contract.
Right, anticipation that...
If you got the funding, then we would sign the contract and send it. But the contract was submitted with the grant application, so the Water Board approved the contract.
Right.
That's how they base their funding on all of that. Our contract, the bond account, and the financial advisor was all included in that.
And you got this contract through a bid process?
It was through a solicitation, the professional services this Tommy talked about. The city advertised for engineers, did interviews, and that's the way it was done.
Was there competing bids?
Well, actually, you have to do the, you have to do the professional services, select the person that you believe is the most qualified. Then you negotiate what's considered a fair and reasonable price. That's the Professional Services Procurement Act. And so the, the state believed that it was a fair and reasonable price, and so they approved the contract. And so that's the way the process goes. It's not, it's not a construction bid. It's qualifications, and then you...
I think what he was asking, were there other people that submitted the proposals?
Yes, there were. Yes, there were. And I'm not sure who all the council interviewed. I know there were at least two firms, but they sent out five and then put it in the newspaper too. And that's part of the forms, the documenting all of that, that you, the state already knows it because you've sent all that information in once, but they want you to sign the forms documenting all of that.
Right, well, the, the Water Development Board wouldn't, wouldn't go any further, all the...
That's right.
All the procurement rules, all the...
Yes, that's right. They, they've approved it before. They just want you to sign it again.
Any questions? All right, what should approve an engineering agreement to take in the market for the design phase of the Abilene Malinger Water Project?
It's hard for me to vote on it. This is literally the first meeting that I've been involved at all in any discussions about the water project. I've not been privy to any executive sessions at all. So I really do not have a full grasp of what we're doing. I'm not saying that I, that I am leaning one way or the other at this moment, but to vote on something, a really big ticket item like this, it's difficult.
Would it, would it be possible, Ken, to, to have a, an executive session as if it were, within the next two weeks, and, and be able to vote on this on the next city council meeting? That way we can get our new council members up to speed. Is that going to affect our timeline? Would, would we be able to squeeze it all in by the end of the month?
Maybe, maybe so. I, I don't really know. The financial advisor is the one who set the timetable on the, which I guess, you're talking about like on the 17th?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, that, that'd be fine. I mean, I'd be happy to, to come and talk to you about it on 17th.
But I feel more comfortable with that also.
Sure. I'd be happy to do that.
Right, because I, I mean, everybody's new.
I'm not leaning one way or the other.
Well, no, no, no. Well, the thing is, you know...
Not confident enough to vote on this.
I believe, I mean, we had, the former council had been through this.
Yes.
And they had a lot of knowledge.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody relatively knew on the council, you know, if, if we could get you to come up, even in this way, they could sit and, and think about other questions they might have.
Sure.
Because it seems like we're cursing them to jump the gun, and we don't want to do that. We don't want them to feel very comfortable when they're walking into that. So if we could meet on the 17th and table it for now, and then hit another bid.
So let's find a solution. That's for this, we...
Well, this is a, just for the bond. This is...
Right, right.
It's the same thing, but different. Does that make sense?
So, well, based on this is what I'm asking, John. We'll have a meeting on the 10th and 17th now? The mid one's wrong.
Okay.
The problem's wrong, the back one's correct.
Okay, the back one's the one that went to paper. The front one was just...
The problem?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll fix this one in another few hours.
Yes.
So you want to add this to the agenda on the 17th, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
The same, to approve the forms to...
That's part of it, yes.
Ken, do you want to go over that next time, when we call that, when you go over the forms?
Yeah, the document, yeah, all of those have to be done before you can close. So the documents basically are saying, we went out for solicitation for qualifications for engineering, and this is what we did. And so it's tied to the agreement. Whenever the previous council went out, and so that made the selection four years ago, and then we documented what the council did, all the advertisements, the qualifications, the interviews that were done. That's on these forms that have to be turned in also. But they have to be turned in before the closing, or you, or you won't get the money.
Well, let's reach a ways. I mean, if we, if we can meet on the 17th?
You bet.
Go over everything in detail.
17th on the 10th? I mean, 17th or the 10th? 17th.
At 10 a.m.
Okay.
10 a.m.
Okay.
That way we can, and we could go ahead and wrap this up.
Okay.
And move forward. But it gives everybody time to...
You bet.
Formulate questions or anything.
That sounds good.
Okay. We appreciate you coming to...
Sure.
And we appreciate the work y'all have been doing, getting this together. And I know working on the contract can be very frustrating. But anyway, we got to do that, but this is the next one.
You bet.
So the 17th, 10.
17th, 10.
Okay, motion to table engineering agreement to take in the market for the Abilene Malinger Water Project. On paper?
All right.
Anybody to pull? Anybody to pull?
What? All right, city council may consider discussing authorized mayor signature on various Texas Water Development Board forms required to close on the funding of the Abilene Malinger Water Project. Is that the form that you thought?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's part of the...
Okay.
These tables, man?
Motion to table the mayor's signature on various Texas Water Development Board forms required to close on the funding of the Abilene Malinger Water Project. Thank you.
And you put those on the agenda for the box? Both of those on the agenda for the 17th?
Yes, sir.
Better being, gotta be. All right, let's go and take action on updating regional hazard mitigation with the West Central Texas Cog. There you go.
Mayor, council, my name is Jay Mortaway, and I'm with H2O Partners out of Austin. We've been contracted by West Central Texas Cog. A little bit of background, every five years, counties and cities are required to update their hazard mitigation plan to apply for grants from TM and FEMA, so both state and federal emergency management agencies. And what that, that is a, you know, it's typically done differently in every community, but in West Texas, that is something that the COG does for its member counties and cities. And so they contract with us to draft hazard mitigation plans. Those planned drafts are then sent to counties and cities within the COG, that's 19 counties. And they're reviewed by city staff, county staff, and changes are made if necessary. And then, once they're approved by the state and by FEMA, they're formally adopted by each entity within the COG, so each city and each county. And I'm here today not to request any action, but simply to give you all a heads up. I found it typically works better to have two meetings instead of one. I don't like to have extra meetings, and I know you guys don't. But this way, you're aware that your city staff is reviewing the draft plan. I've sent a copy of the draft plan to Tommy, and it's about, he pulled it up, it's about 400 pages long. But I want to be very clear on something. Only about 27 of those pages apply to the city of Malinger. That's Brown County, Coleman County, and Rennos County. So that's every city and most counties with it. So some of those pages don't apply to Malinger. I'm not dissuading anybody from reading the power plan if they so choose, but I sent the specific pages to Tommy. to Tommy as well that apply to Ballenger, so you can review those. And those pages are what had been recommended in past plans, and what's recommended now. And, go quote, sorry.
Okay, when you talk about the plan, what does this involve?
So, hazard mitigation plan, and I, I feel like I always get a, a follow-up question, which is, okay, in the event of a natural disaster, God forbid, is this something we have to mess with before FEMA shows up and helps us? No, that has nothing to do with, but that's a totally separate deal. This is in the event that you've identified a potential hazard, uh, flooding, fire, tornado, in your jurisdiction, and you want to apply for a grant from FEMA or from the state to mitigate that hazard. So, uh, an example that I think every county in the cog, uh, has listed is a, a, a citywide emergency notification system. If you want to, you know, and, and you'll see, if you look at the pages, they'll say, oh, here's this, and that, that costs $10 million. You should either budget for that, or apply for a grant. Well, most cities and counties in the cog don't have just $10 million laying around that they could spend on. Lots of people can't go alone, uh, you know, emergency notification system. And so, the recommendation would be, oh, you should apply for a grant for that, and that's one way to mitigate potential hazards for, I mean, it could be, it's sometimes it's much simpler than that. Sometimes it's, uh, pay for brochures to be made available at City Hall that, that tries for flood insurance. Sometimes it can be cleaning out culverts. I mean, and in any one of these actions you might want to take, you could apply for a grant from FEMA to pay for it. However, the first thing FEMA is going to do, say, would you have an updated hazard mitigation plan? So that's the requirement on your end. Yes, we do, was, and, and so, like I said, these are updated every five years. In the world of West Texas weather, five years is not a long time, right? The hazards don't really, if we did them every five million years, they might be very different, I don't know. But every five years, they're not, and so it's going to be the same. A lot of times, there's not going to be a lot of changes in your draft plan from five years previous. But sometimes there is. If you built a reservoir, if you've up, you know, done some dam construction or something like that, that's something that would be noted in there. Uh, and so what we're asking at this point is to take a look at the draft plan, and again, distribute to mayor councils if so choose, and rest of the staff, make sure it's accurate, uh, and let us, you know, give us any feedback, any changes that need to be made. It'll be approved by the state, approved by FEMA. I'll come back and say, okay, here's the final plan, and please adopt. I'm anticipating that that will happen in the spring. FEMA was taking a long time anyway before the government shut down, and so, I don't know, I don't know what that, what the, what the shutdown or anything else does to that timetable, honestly. Uh, FEMA personnel are considered essential, a lot of them, so I, I don't know that that, that derails the timeline much.
It's basically irrelevant, when they get around to doing what they need to do, as long as we are covered currently.
Yes, you, you have a, you have an in-place hazard mitigation plan from five years ago-
Correct.
-that is not, that, that, that won't expire within the, the window of-
Right.
Uh, of this review, no.
That's correct. So it doesn't really matter when FEMA gets around to doing-
No, I, I mainly tell you that so that, you know, I, a, a little personal background, I was in the city council in Abilene, and it would drive me crazy sometimes when we would get a 300-page Park Master Plan, and they'd say, well, it's Friday, and we meet on Thursday, so beat up, you know? And I just want to make sure that you guys have plenty of time to look over anything, ask any questions, find out any information, and then, one thing I'll add, uh, I heard it mentioned, and I'd heard already that there were some new folks on the council, even if you're not new, you've been on the council a long time. To the extent that this might come as news, hell, I don't remember doing this five years ago. The majority of the communities in the cog, the county is who runs point on a lot of this emergency management and hazard mitigation type work. Uh, it really just depends on the community. Uh, example, I'm, I live in Abilene, city of Abilene kind of runs point on it, because I have a larger staff for that than Taylor County does, but in pretty much every other county, it's the county that runs point. And, uh, in fact, your representative on the cog executive board is Judge Chilier. So, his staff is, is also a good resource, you know, if anybody's got any questions, or, or wants any additional information, especially on a local perspective. I speak to it at kind of a global level, but if there's a specific, I don't know, road that you have questions about, or that an area that's prone to flooding, or something like that, that's probably a better avenue to, to, to take is with Judge Chilier. But, uh, but anyway, that, they, traditionally, they've been the ones most involved in, I mean, this process, like I say, every five years, but it's got a, it's got a head and a tail, right? You start a little bit before you need to, and it goes a little longer than it's supposed to, so it's kind of like it's always going on. Meetings for this cycle started in 2017. Um, and then, I was looking back at the meeting minutes from those meetings, and the primary attendee from Ronald County was the, the county sheriff and the county judge, so, uh, they would be good resources about any, any sort of local, uh, issues, and, and they, I've met with Judge Chilier already, uh, and, and am working this process with him, as well as city of Winters and city of Miles. So, uh, and again, all the Ronald County information is in the, the packet I sent you. I just specifically noted the, the Ballenger pages, uh, and, and would encourage anybody, uh, to, to look through those. And, uh, you got my contact info if anybody's got any questions.
And, and, and our guys have been working with the cog and the county, uh, going through our part of the hazard mitigation plan for, to update it, so, uh, and I, I don't know at what point, I mean, we've submitted information already.
Yes, so, in November of 2017, the cog sent out paperwork to every city and every county, and, and, and so the draft plan, the information in the draft plan is information we received from you all. Uh, so, again, this is more just to double check and make sure everything is right. Um, and, uh, I will say, this process can be difficult if city or county staff is not responsive, and I really want to thank, uh, Mr. Attorney and the Shields for taking time to meet with me already, and, uh, you guys have been very responsive, and it's very appreciated. Makes it a lot easier.
Good.
So, and so, purely from I'm not asking for any action, I just, what I didn't want to do is surprise you with something that, that is very important, uh, you know, last minute, and say, hey, adopt this, don't ask me what's in it, so. Any other questions? The, the only thing I, I have before wrapping up is I've got some signing sheets. You can, you don't have to, you can keep going with the meeting, I'll pass them out, and I would ask anyone in attendance, even if you're not a city employee, uh, to sign, because we'll file these with the state and FEMA, and they'll, uh, want to know that, you know, I met with you and everything, so.
That you're doing the job.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right. They don't need to say my work.
You just take the sense ahead.
So, yeah, I was about to say, I'm really glad you're proud of me. Thank you, uh, any other questions? Okay, well, uh, Tommy's got my info, and, and happy to help in any way we can, and thanks so much for the time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, discuss consider take action on review from the auditor concerning city Ballenger finances and procedures.
Our auditor is not complete. We, we anticipated that he would be in, uh, enabled to talk, uh, tonight, uh, he is not able to be here. Uh, he still had some, some figures he was trying to get together, so we're going to have to actually push this to the next council meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we didn't want to rush or step off into this in haste, so, uh, uh, we're going to have to put this back on the agenda, uh, for the 21st. Well, well, that, that's kind of the guy. Hardly to keep you.
Okay, so, well, we'll get to that later.
Yeah, but we're going to have to talk about that.
You mean next regular meeting?
Next, one of their scheduled meetings.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Alright, motion to table the review from the auditor concerning city finances and procedures.
Make motion.
Second. I'll bear that.
I know everybody was in anxious anticipation, but, uh, just couldn't get it done this, this week, so.
I don't know, any, any movement on mission, uh, in quotes?
Uh, that's, basically, he's not through.
He's not through?
He, that, he is.
That wasn't a shit, did?
Alright, discuss consider take action on concerns from Mr. David Ferguson regarding the child pickup and drop off site on Highway 67.
Yeah, Ferguson.
Okay.
I'm already in charge.
Yes, babe.
Did you, the pure police?
How many for a pony book?
Well, there's no podium there either.
Okay. Where, where, where you come from, where you at?
Um, first of all, I'm here to discuss the police chief with you. Uh, I want to address him first and let them know that I'm not here to throw you under the bus, and I'm not here to get your job, you can make sure you do your job. And if you don't do your job, what happens is all you, okay?
Yeah, I'll bet.
Alright, um, I have talked to Bob, I've talked to you, I've talked to Tommy many times, at least three or something of these, regarding, I drive a school bus, most of y'all know I'm self-employed. Does anybody know I'm self-employed? I know each.
Oh, you were looking at me, I thought.
You know, you just don't look like a good dad.
Trying to tell him, I gotta, get you some-
Um, anyway, and you, when you have, when you're self-employed, you can't get, you cannot get insurance coverage unless, you know, a little regular person can afford. So I work for the school, and I drive a school bus, so I can have insurance. And I have a real problem, we drop kids off over here at where Bus Country used to be, now it's 3B, I believe, and I have real problems with cars stopping. They won't stop, with the arms out on the bus, says stop, and won't stop. And I have, in the past, had discussed it with many of the council members, um, at one time, I was chasing the nun on the bus, and getting out, and going up to the back of the car, and hanging on the window, and they roll the window down, and I said, you just drove along, da-da-da-da-da, you don't need to do that, you need to make sure that you stop when that bus on is out. And my husband called me, he said, you're going to get shot in the face, so you need to stop there. You need to give it to the people that can, can control it. So he suggested I call the police department, which also was suggested by Bob and my friend. And I did call him and discuss it with him. Um, I also went to his office and talked to an officer, and we had a good discussion in there. And I talked to our police chief about it, and he informed me that he just really, the traffic is always their problem, and there's always going to be a problem, and that he can't, he doesn't have the manpower to do it, and he doesn't have the time to do it. We're talking about a 10-minute window down there, 10 minutes. I just need somebody, we need to train these people to stop, you know? They, they don't stop, they just blaze by. One day, I shook my hand out the window to try to get the guy to stop, and he sped up. So, you know, since I have talked to all these city officials about it, if one of the kids gets hurt on the bus, they're going to own this town. They're going, I mean, it's going to be bad news. I'm sure our attorney general can, can attest to that. It would be bad news, am I right?
Don't say that, but you're cloudish.
Okay, anyway.
I don't think the city home is safe. I've got a protective coverage.
Well, nonetheless, we are in a position where the town needs money, that's a great way to earn some extra money. I was told that it was, that the town doesn't get any money off of that, really. Um, I don't know if that's true or not, you, people might know, I don't know.
Does it get anything off the what?
Off of tickets. If they don't make, the city doesn't make any money off of tickets. I don't know if that you're in on.
Where is the money going?
The majority of the money goes to the state. You got a ticket, didn't you? Probably about 30, 35% will stay with the city.
Well, I did talk to someone else, another police officer, and he, he disagrees with you. He says that the city gives about 70% of that money, but, I don't know.
Well, that may be irrelevant.
It, it is irrelevant, because I just want somebody there, look, you know, to train these people. If any of y'all go to Miles, I bet you're trained to stop on there, because it's slow down. And everybody's trained to stop. A lot of everybody, 10 years ago, we blew from there and left dust in there, in their pots up there. Now, everybody's trained, everybody slows down, everybody does. If you don't, you're going to get a ticket.
So, Peggy, didn't you say two kids almost got it wrong?
No, but the mother did.
Well, she was out trying to slow traffic.
She was out trying to slow, slow it down, yeah, slow the traffic down. And we don't need the mother getting run over either, I just don't need that heavy.
That's her fault. I'm sorry to say, that's her fault.
That may be true, but she's out there doing what you should be doing. I believe that a child passed the red over in that area before, like, closer, maybe, uh, 38 years ago.
I was on the bus that day, that was us.
Yeah, that's right, we were on the bus together, didn't we?
Right there.
Yeah, I was on the bus that day.
I'm not here to argue with you about what, what money goes where, who goes what, whether or not you have the manpower to do it, whether or not you have the time to do it. I'm here to tell you that you're the manager, you're in charge, and your job is to figure it out. And if you can't figure it out, then maybe you're not the right person for the job. Because somebody's got to do this, and you took an earth to serve and protect. And that serve and protect counts on those kids. And I have had to contact the sheriff department to get somebody out there to help me, and I should not have to do that, because I pay your salary.
Yes, you did, thank you. And I have asked the sheriff department to help us, and to P us, because there's some times where we can't just be out there just for you, or for any of us.
For 10 minutes?
For 10 minutes.
For 5 minutes? I gave you a 5-minute window to do this.
Yes. Well, like, Friday, I'll give you an example, Friday.
You were texting me as I live.
When?
Friday, the last day of school.
No, no, I'm talking about last Friday. If you had school last Friday.
I did.
Okay, I had one officer on a domestic, I was stuck at the hospital with any major more patient. There was no other officer out, and that's during your time period. I'm sorry, there's, I cannot. Now, unless you want to pay my officers $35 an hour to escort you through town, we can do that.
Well-
That's not, that's not a hard-
I can't tell you, I'm not going to promise you I'm going to be out there at 4:30 every time you go up the hill.
When I talked to you on the phone, you made it really clear that there was no way that that was going to happen.
I didn't say that.
You said, you don't have the manpower.
You didn't hear that.
You don't have the manpower, and you don't have the time. And I said, what about, what about, sorry, what about one of your reserve officers?
Well, what, what, well, what, what it sounds like we need to do is, is, we have a sheriff's office, we do have our local PD, and we do have the, the highway patrol, okay? Instead of arguing about who does what, it sounds like we need to do a better job of coordinating amongst ourselves as far as the police agencies, and, uh, I mean-
No, every, I mean, all, all the agency knows, from 3:50 to about 4:15 buses run. I did not know Paint Rock dropped off. Okay, you worked for Paint Rock, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I did not know. If you, and if you go later than 4:15 or so, I don't know you're dropping off.
If, if we know that, that you have a window there, whether it be the sheriff, the highway patrol, or- If, if we know that, that you have a window there, whether it be the sheriff, the highway patrol, or the, or the P D, uh, we could coordinate and, and have somebody there, or at least starting, it may not be every day, but, but we could have somebody there frequently, if we know that this is a problem area.
That should not be necessary. Please support the security.
Okay, I'm sorry, I live in a resident, where between the elementary school and junior high, on Eleventh Street, actually, and it's very, very busy, when work, when kids are coming through, getting out of school, because there are parents going from the elementary school to the junior high to try to pick up two kids at one time. I've actually seen officers there, which I appreciate, because there are kids, a lot of kids, they can't have their parents pick them up and then walk. There are parent, there are, um, officers there patrolling, making sure that school zones are, there's no one going fifty miles an hour let they happen, which I appreciate, because one of my, I can't always get my kids up, and I appreciate those officers there, making sure that those, you know, laws are being followed. Um, I'm also, I've been a nurse at the hospital, so I understand when officers are being stuck at the hospital, um, and there's no one else. So, I also see them across the street from exactly what you're referring to, I'm just gonna say it straight heel, uh, from heel, and I've seen officers there before, and I, we would literally count the cars, that they would pull over. So it's not like they've never been there before, because I've actually seen them pull cars in before, they're running right past the arm that you're talking about, sticking out from the school bus. So I understand both sides of the story. Um, if they've got officers pulled at the hospital as nurses and as medical professionals, I don't want that officer pulled, because I do for my safety and patient's safety. As a parent, as a parent...
Should be able to get somebody...
Right, right, and I don't know, like, Angel, they have citizens on controllers, there's that, or things like that. Or would he get... That, or because, take pictures of, I don't know if they even take pictures of license plates, I don't know if there's frequent offenders, I don't know, they should keep passing through town, but what I do appreciate is what your officers do to our kids in the school zone area, especially on my side of town, and what you do for the hospital, things like that.
So Sam, here's the deal, and, and we appreciate that.
Yes, I don't want it to get vashing, you know, with...
Well, well, I, I don't think that...
I'm not here for vashing.
The thing is...
I understand that, I, I do understand that.
Thank you. The thing is, we have a, a, a problem that just needs to be there, it's an issue. And, and I don't know that Becky is, is, is asking for someone to sit down there every day, but it is an issue that needs to be brought up. And again, we can't guarantee that somebody's gonna be there every time, but we can, uh, coordinate with other agencies to make sure that that is a problem area and it can be watched.
I've been doing that route, that particular route, that area for, for a year now, and I have. The only time I've ever seen anybody there was, this truck was there, and he was inside talking to Kim.
I understand, I understand.
So Sam, when this subject was brought to me by Becky, I couldn't reach a resolution for her, I called Stan, he said he'd take care of it. How much time, a week, two weeks? And you said you'd been there one time? And then...
And he was like...
After your calls to me, I thought to reach a resolution between you two, I'd give you your cell number. Well, that's the biggest mistake I've ever made, because I've got a pretty severe record man from Stan for doing that. So, even though the city pays a percentage of his phone bill, even when he's funding the ride, so my question about that is, has he reached the name? I don't know unless he has a nine-one-one for certain, I don't know how he reached.
You called this best.
So you then went to the sheriff's office. The sheriff said he'd take care of this for you. Now, I'm sure you would agree that the sheriff is much busier man. His general administration has served papers, traffic, wrecks, and a lot.
He has.
Now, he has to do some city business. But did he give you his cell number?
He certainly did.
Thomas got his cell number on his car. I have my cell number, I'm at White City Council. But the sheriff gave you his cell?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
He patrolled the entire county, he patrolled the three miles, roughly, of highway, highway area. You got six officers, you...
On a rotation, I have a question to you. I have a, I have a question. You're dropping them off on the highway, right there at Rough Country?
Mm-hmm.
And why is that position, that point?
I get on the side of the highway. I don't stop in the middle of the highway.
Okay, but you're on that highway, in front of Rough Country?
Yes.
Drop them off at the corner.
Right. It's kids, they're all in our area, the kids, the kids are important for it. Why would you not be able to drop them off around the corner on the county road, per se being right on the main highway?
I don't come on the county road, I don't drive on the county road.
What about pulling in at the Orange Parking Lot?
Into the what?
Into the Orange Parking Lot, they park the lot right next to it.
Well, there's also the clinic in, in, what?
The young man that gets off there works for, for Rough Country, he goes to work when I drop him off. For him to walk from somewhere else is gonna be cutting, hence his time, and that's, it's not officially the stop for me. The official stop, as we have to let make a list to the state as to every stop we make.
Yes.
That is the official stop.
Is right there at Rough Country?
Yes.
Okay, if you're saying a long walk, I mean, it's, it's a house, all I'm saying is that corner on the county road, it's a house across there to that.
I do Rowena.
It's a safer area.
I do Rowena.
Okay.
And then I come to Rough Country, I would have to come from Rowena and then go back and come down the country road.
Not per se, unless you cut off on the access road there to Walmart, you go into the clinic, you come out, you're right there on the side of the street, right there at the house, he walks across the parking lot, he's at work.
Unless he's still not been having anybody protected. He still don't have the bus there with the lights, with the lights and stop signs out, he's walking across there as a pedestrian.
Well, I think there's many ways that this can be solved. I think the main issue was that, um, you know, again, we could do a better job of coordinating. I mean, there's, uh, I think that's the main issue at hand, is we, we need to provide good customer service. Okay? And, and we want to be able to tell you, we will take care of it. Whether we do it ourselves, we, we interact with the sheriff, we interact with the D P S.
Well, D P S, I understand, is in Sweetwater all the time, so there's not usually any of them.
I, I understand, but, you know, if there's somebody passenger, I mean, I don't know their schedule, I don't know who does what. I just know that we wanna be able to help you in your situation.
Is it a situation with just Paint Rock, if she shows up at Valner's Schools, but they won't show up to my school, is it just a deal with Paint Rock?
I just said that a second ago, whatever matter of school, kid to the kid, the school bus to the school bus, right, it's a statewide issue. It's a statewide issue.
Go on, what? Is there anything in particular you're asking us to do?
I would like to have at least for two weeks, somebody there from three-twenty to three-twenty-five to monitor the traffic and catch anybody that's blazing by.
Now, you're telling me a different time?
No, I told you three fifteen, then I never...
I was, I was told...
Four twenty, four to four twenty-five.
Okay, that's what I was told.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you just said three thirty.
I'm sorry.
That's what I told you, the four, after four o'clock.
Would it be unreasonable for us to coordinate with the sheriff's office, to see if we could have somebody monitor that area in a short period of time, just to kind of get everybody used to the bus schedule?
I can contact the sheriff myself, if he is already giving me his number, and say he'd be happy to work.
I also like that they'll explore a different drop-off place, that is a dangerous drop-off place, right on the highway, just around the corner, you're talking about twenty yards from there.
The, the, Valner's ID has done a different thing, instead of pulling right there in front of the house, right there in front of Walmart, they drop off in the U S D A parking lot.
Right, they pull around over and then pull through.
Yeah.
And he gets across the highway?
No, no, no.
No, I'm not because... The house is on the other side, across from Walmart.
Well, I'm crossing, I am pulling over on my side of the highway, and drop him off.
Does he cross the highway after you pull him off?
No.
And you said earlier there was a mother that stopped some kids, is this the only kid you're dropping off, or you're dropping off multiple kids?
No, that's the only kid I dropped, well, his kid, his brother's sister, there's like four, five.
So you're four or five kids getting off one drop?
Yes. Sometimes, sometimes they're only one, sometimes they're just one, sometimes it's two. They're, so one guy goes to Rough Country, and then, or the old, they all go to Rough Country. So are they crossing the highway?
No.
No, I pull up right side, okay. I put my arm out and cover it, and like I said, they don't, a lot of them don't even stop. Now, if they see a cop or see an officer, they will stop or slow down, but if it's just me, no, they won't.
Well, I mean, on a, on a, on a two-lane type, not a two-lane, a, a four-lane.
That's a four-lane with a medium.
Right, a four-lane with a medium.
Well, as a turning.
Right, okay.
No medium.
Now, it is the law that you should stop even if it's a two-lane, I mean...
All four-lane traffic.
All, all, yeah.
All four-lane traffic.
There's not a concrete medium in between.
That's what I was trying to say, you have...
Yeah, there's no comparison, you have to start from one.
And you have, you have to stop both ways.
Right, yeah.
And it's a long.
Yeah.
Tell your parents, your grandparents, whatever, that...
It's a sliding door. It's a correct.
I just, I mean, I just want to get my kids taken care of, I don't want to hurt anybody, I don't want to kill anybody, I don't want to shame anybody, I just want my kids taken care of, that's all I want. Now, I have to go to the city council now, see, or my, my boss, and see if I can change my route, but that still doesn't affect the fact that I paid taxes in Valner, I brought kids in Valner, why can't I get help in Valner?
You can, when we're available, that's what I was trying to tell you on the phone.
How would I know?
How would I know? Tomorrow.
I call, I've talked to...
I can't, I can't get this schedule on my day. I can get this schedule on my day, I would.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Becky. Would you like to action?
Yes, sir. Would, do any good, maybe do a little public education, do the newspapers, say, down to P D, Rough County's gonna be concentrating on this area, you know, for people that are not stopping at these school buses and stuff, just kind of something in the paper, just kind of...
We, we have posted, uh, safety tips and stuff like that on Facebook, not in the paper, but on Facebook, on line, laws of traffic.
I don't, I don't think it'd be a problem for the newspaper to post something, but, yeah, we'll be, like, just give them a little public awareness, something to do, we concentrate in certain areas and maybe...
Well, if they have a driver's license, they should ban the law. They do ban the traffic, the traffic, uh, probably finds or doubles.
We actually talked to the state about two years ago, trying to get the traffic to slow down further back, about a mile further back from there, because that's about where the speed limit's standing, and they said they'd have to do some more traffic surveys before they could do that.
Can you do a sign, could the state do a sign that says, uh, bus, bus stop, caution, bus stop?
There's one, actually, right there where you drop off.
Works no good, doesn't it?
Problem is, we have to do it state, or the state... We, we can't just put a sign up, we have to ask them if we can do it, or if actually they can do it.
You don't get, do it, they, too, you think you can.
That's what I was saying, yeah, they, anyway, so...
I think we can track it out there.
Um, it's a, it's a, is there any action?
We can span it out there, we can track it left.
Is there any action that should be taken on this?
I don't think so.
Well, I'll put it in the paper, okay, I'll read it in the paper Wednesday, okay, thank you.
You ought to talk to Dennis, we're, it's a big plan, it's like three, four hundred dollars.
No, it's a five hundred dollars.
Second, second. Yes, because of your house. And it's a good, it's a good time, the deployment of whole, thank you, we are now aware of it, and we can do everything we can to alleviate the situation.
Not expecting...
There's no way that, you know, they, anybody can be acting against their citizens.
I think you're, sir.
I said, we are now aware of the situation, you've talked to me about it, I've talked to the chief police about it, we've talked to sheriff about it, we're going to get the highway patrol, get involved, if they're available, we're aware of it, and we'll try and alleviate the situation as best we possibly can.
Okay, I will check with Chief Tommy, if, if he finds out if it's gonna work or not, and if I need to change my route, or if we need to... Just let it take a while to be there.
Thank you.
Or that you heard him.
Just letting them know, all right, thank you.
All right, discuss and consider, take action on many operation, operating hours and price and fee for recycling.
Hello, what's all that? Hey, Eric, how's your day going?
Eric, sir.
I went ahead and dropped off those packets, that way y'all can skim over what are meeting going on. Um, we have Republic, what they charged us, what San Sabo charges their residents, our current pricing, and then our proposed pricing. And I want to go ahead and let you know that there's a typo on there, um, construction and brush, there seems to be construction, because we don't charge the brush.
What we've done, uh, in, in, in looking at our, our operations for, uh, waste management services, uh, we're looking at, at our, uh, recycle centers pretty hard, to see if, uh, if there's something we can do to, to make it more efficient. And, uh, we visited, uh, San Sabo, but it's a very active recycle center, uh, and we've got this Republic, who is our current operator, uh, contractor. And it's in the column there, and what color is that?
Green.
Green. And, and green is, is what we currently do, uh, the, the one in yellow? The one in yellow is our proposed change. As you can see, uh, if we, someone takes a bag of trash, or, or loose trash, uh, we do not charge for taking that at the recycle center, as that's pretty much part of the, the, the service we provide to the city, or, for the citizens. Uh, the construction is, if, if someone takes down a, a building, a, a part of a house, if you're remodeling...
Carport, stuff like that.
Right, uh, then, we haven't really been taking it, if we did, it's been, actually, they go dump it illegally.
And we take it anyways.
And we have to go take it anyways, so...
Well, it's illegal.
Yeah, and if we can provide an outlet to where someone could actually bring it in, uh, but the problem is, we have to get rid of it as well, so we have to get Republic to take that, or we pay them. Uh, all we're asking to do is...
Break even.
Well, that's all we're trying to do, is break even on, on what we're, we're taking. Uh, so there's, there's your construction, the passenger tires, we've taken a lot of tires to get them off the street. Uh, we're going up one dollar per tire, uh, and, and, and now, and at the same time, we're actually have plans to build a machine to cut the tire into quarters. Uh, we've got our materials gathered up, uh, and as, as we get time to actually work on it, we'll be able to cut these in quarters and throw them away as garbage, and not as, as, uh, as a tire, because, uh...
Well, currently, we're taking the tires to Ad Lane Environmental, and right now, our current charge is two dollars a tire, and we're spending two dollars and nine cents a tire, average, to get rid of it. That's not counting diesel, the truck, trailer, wear and tear, or paying the C D L driver to take it out there.
And now, these process, uh, the seven fifty for, uh, large truck tires and tractor tires, uh...
We're gonna be taking a hit on those.
Yeah, yeah, we're...
But if we don't, if we try to charge them what it costs us to get rid of it, we're still gonna be picking them up out of alleys and, you know, some crannies around town, or at the lake park.
Uh, okay, so, uh, as you can see, most, I mean, other than the, the tire charge, we're, we're a lot lower than, uh, our counterpart, San Sabo's charging, or, uh, Republic. Now, some of the Republic's services, they do a lot of bulk service, San Sabo was more in line with what we do as a state. Thank you. Well...
L should be twenty-five per cubic yard, which puts us right in line with about fifty dollars a ton.
Okay. So...
So. That's a market.
Okay.
So what we have is correct, that is?
Yes, some of this.
What you have is correct.
Some of this went to Cory for him to incorporate before the change was made.
I can't see that.
Oh.
I can't see the hand.
So, oh, and, and we haven't been historically taking the shingles, uh, because they go directly to San Angelo, uh, again. We're trying to stop some of the illegal dumping, so we'll go ahead and take them, uh, in San Angelo, what do they charge?
Forty-five a ton.
Forty-five a ton, so.
Same way with construction material, which we're taking out of lower.
Right, so.
Also on top of that, um, for people that don't have the means or ability, if they call in a work order, we will come and pick up furniture and stuff like that from their property. Um, because the space and everybody has to pick it up in a trailer. But I'd like to make it free for all solid waste from household to be brought to us. They pay for that in their trash bill.
Water bill.
Or water bill, which is on there. So we're looking to provide that service and at least try and break even, so, I mean, we're nonprofit, but we can operate a lot better.
Uh, our next item, just what the socking center is going to be, the hours.
That'll be that second sheet. Right now, I get a forty-five day, uh, run, to count the amount of people we have. On a real busy week, so we're looking at fourteen, seventeen. About average, we get four or five people.
Per day, per week.
Per week. Now, if we can open it up on the weekends when most people have off work, because currently, we're operating in the time where most people are at work. And you only have half a day on Saturday, so you get off there. You know, five o'clock Friday, try to get everything ready, and then be lunchtime down there. If we can open it up Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we can allocate our full-time staff to be better used and make that a part-time position, allowing more people to come down there and pile the waste with me there.
I think that would certainly help. That's a good idea.
Any questions? Thank you for coming.
Your shop didn't encourage people to dumpster, dumpster, I'm sure I've heard the fact, but. So, uh, three dumpsters, my other guy had a quarter full of construction. At least it made it to the dumpster. You don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
What do we do with that waste?
Take them or suck them.
We were talking about we could lock.
Okay, normally, we haven't been taking leaves, but what you can do is we'll go ahead and deposit it down there at the transfer station, and we can take it out to the landfill where we put the brush and everything in it.
If you do that, you can't take, you can't leave.
I understand.
So they need to make for bags?
Well, yeah.
They do make, you know.
Yeah, they do.
But we didn't ask to make it port work, we had to use.
When we drop them off.
They were like big grocery bags, kind of big brown bags, but they were recyclable bags, fiberglass bags.
Yeah, yeah.
And then.
If they're, if they're, they're less than the things they are.
If they were, no plastic in them, yeah.
A contamination problem.
Yeah. Well, we just have several that we got stepped on in our new home, and we just, Randy was going to haul them to, to Eden, we have our, a dump area on some of our land there. But it would be much easier if we could dispose that in love. So they're just kind of sitting there, we don't know what to do.
I'm going to go to the city.
Call the city.
So, bring it online, um, if you would give us a call and let us know when it's happening, I'd go ahead and have people down there, we can be right into the dump pit and take it out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions about pricing or times?
I disagree with doing the Sunday hours, if you do Thursday hour, it'd be Sunday, close, it'd be chilly. You're absolutely one of our employees, working on the Sunday, get your, this is all, I don't agree with that.
I understand.
Yeah, a lot of people work on their houses and on their yards on Sunday.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
Well, I see a lot of people working on Sunday afternoons, maybe, well, I've been on Sunday morning, I've been in there, or while I'm.
Well, no, no, I understand. We're just trying to accommodate for the people who need to use it.
And. Ten to five, Sunday, from one to five. Still have to be open all day, from eight to five, just answer Sunday hour, one to five.
We can do that.
There's a lot of life there.
That trial?
Yeah, it's all trial, huh?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, is this.
Oh, thank you. Holy crap. You said there's trial.
You didn't show it, would you?
I'm with Sam, I think we need to try to hang on to some of the Christian days, some of these people may want to go to church. Sunday afternoon, like we said.
Uh, we got no problem with that. So you're okay with one to five?
I am. What do they do?
Well, I would think that, uh, when we're posting the job offering, whoever takes the job knows that they'd be working Sunday morning. We have a lot of people that don't actually go to church every Sunday. We have people with other faces, their status is all Saturday.
It's irrelevant, we can drive them to five, it's no problem. So, we can take the times, amend, and then go forward.
Okay.
Just a long, we don't have a moose one, everybody left it, it's a problem. Is that how it is?
I'm for one to five, I'm saying, there are people who won't go to church. And we're supposed to recognize that they enjoy Sunday.
You're not making no stuff that ain't dropping trash off, huh? And then you're not making no stuff that ain't dropping trash off, that's the good part.
Those people work.
Employees, what's your work about?
Right, I'm not home, that's, yeah, the hallers.
You can't simply.
I want to be, go to church, so.
So I think we're supposed to do the job offering before that time, so we're going to wish this to, go in and work that time.
They go there with earlier, signing up for. I don't carry it with, I mean, and then, and then, if we can make up that every. I'll put Monday, Thursday, if you ever do, make it possible, it doesn't matter, it's irrelevant.
It's how you are.
Well, moving forward with, with the amended time.
We can arrange it somewhere.
You might be there, you bags every morning, buddy.
Yes, one to five, that's fine.
What were you covering, he was saying about Thursday?
I'm in here Thursday.
But currently, this leaves it open twenty-four hour, twenty-four hours of working time for people to come drop by. If we take four hours out, that knocks it down to twenty, we may need to look at allocating another four hours back to them.
Is there a reason that we need it to be twenty-four?
Well, we got, we're under.
We're just trying to accommodate what, what we think is, is going to work better.
Okay, we're anticipating more people coming down to drop off within.
And, and we're trying to utilize our workforce smarter, instead of them sitting there waiting on customers for five a week.
Right.
That we can utilize them elsewhere. And if we narrow the timeframe to the weekend when more people are off and, and likely to come, then, um, that's.
So do we need to add, do we need to make Thursday open?
Maybe go over a hundred and twenty hours, we can see how it goes, and if we start getting a lot more traffic than we can handle, we may have to adjust more hours.
So I would be.
Is this a part-time job?
Just my.
Our supply, making it a part-time job.
Yes. We can, we can.
Okay, with the way it is, we should hire someone on Sunday.
TMRAs, if you work Sunday.
What did you say, Mike?
I'm okay with it, it's one to five on Sunday.
Yeah.
I don't want to even add another day.
So everybody's okay with the hours other than the eight to twelve on Sunday, we'll leave it one to five on Sunday, and you'll monitor, and we'll see if you want to add anything on Thursday later.
Yes, sir.
Monitor again, or modify again. Is everybody agreeing with that?
Yes.
What about the pricing?
I was talking with the person themselves.
Sir?
I was talking with the person themselves.
Everybody did the pricing? Awesome. All right. Motion to amend the operating hours and pricing fees for the recycle center with the modification of the Sunday being closed eight to twelve to open one to five.
So.
Second?
Second.
I'll take your say on.
All right.
Awesome. Thanks, sir.
Um, if you'll send me that, I'll put it in the paper, I'll write it in the hour, I'll put, I'll get the hours, I'll, I'll get that pricing, I'll put it in the paper, all right.
We take crap for that shots of beer, to find food. Did you toss brush off of that line C for Phil? So you want, kind of, put brush on there?
Phil, can you place strike brush?
So it's not that he knows.
No, she's like, she's.
Yeah, just the word brush.
Okay, got that.
Do I be helping?
Yes. You can take one at a time.
Very, yes.
Yes, you can. That way. I'm like, when you want to talk, I can read it, talk about it, that's a fun.
All right, city council may consider discussing taking action to start the demolition process on the following substantial properties. We're going to take one at a time. Uh, first one is Thomas Clinton Owens, eleven zero eight North Fifth Street, blocks nine and ten, block eleven, Golden Edition. See present?
If we show, if we push it down, or?
He's asking if we wanted to push it down.
Yes, yes, that, on, on that particular house, we would, uh, we would demolish it. And you would retain the, the, the property, the, the ownership of the property, but the house would be gone, and we clean it up. Now, any labor that we would have would go against that property as a, as a, a lane.
So.
Yes, sir.
If I tore it down, I really, I had a timeline to do it.
If you were wanting to tear it down yourself, we would not charge you for that. Uh, and we could give you a timeline, uh, ninety days approximately to see, you know, as long as you're working on it, one way or the other.
Well, I brought stuff down, I put it up there, you know, I was going to work on it, but then the city didn't miss it, and they would take pictures of what I brought down there, and then they made me move all that too, so I can't put nothing out there, it worked on me.
Right.
And, because I keep getting debunked on that, you know, all the time, or every time I bring material down or something, I have to hold it up.
Right.
I can't, you know, I live in earth, so I'm running back forth on that, and so I help fly, and I'm not even, I'm not even a good player anymore. I'm not really able to work for me like I wish I could.
What, what is your intention in dealing with the property?
Well, I don't know, that place is not really livable, it's going to have to be rewired, it would have to be replumbed, and all that stuff, so. It's, uh, I'm really looking like to sell it.
Okay.
Yeah, look at, look at that. So if the house is there, I mean, the house is not worth nothing, I mean, I could be selling a lot, couldn't let, the house is pretty much gone. But, uh, or, uh, like I said, really, so if I put it up for sale, if I had a timeline there, we'd get it.
Well, again, if you had it for sale, we wouldn't, we wouldn't look against it. Uh, while it was for sale, uh, strictly because you're, you're trying to do something with it. You know, our goal is not to, to.
Well, I understand, I mean, it's kind of around, I know what that, I know, I understand, they have some kind of, they get it by, so they send me.
Well, one is not just, you know, I mean, everybody, it's called, I mean, like, you know, and then we understand, and, and as long as you have an intention of doing something with it, you know, we, you know, we can provide you some time to do something with it. Uh, so.
I know, I know, if you're going to sell it, I'll see what.
Okay.
There, so if y'all want to push it down while I'm gone or something.
No, we will not.
Y'all will let me know before y'all did.
Yes, yes, we will.
I bet you have some stuff in it that.
Yeah, no, no, we, we're not going to do that to you, I mean, we want you to do something, you know, and we're not going to take the house down and you not know about it, so.
Eleven part of his house was the only, the one that they tore off.
Well, sure, and, and, you know, I mean, I don't know, you might want to keep some of the materials and.
I mean, that's what I was thinking, I could, maybe sell the material.
But as long as we see some progress, it's not a problem delaying, uh, you just need some, so, uh, so if you just give me ninety days, you'd have no problem.
Well, I mean, like I said, we're for the sale, but I say that it is, to, uh, when I say that it is, I'm not waiting down.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, so two times.
All right.
Last question on this, before we. If you sell it, save us forty-nine days, what are we going to do, if people buy it, they don't want it very quick? Because it's still the same problem, huh?
Y'all, the buyer, you don't make.
A new buyer, if you hear.
Yeah.
I guess. I don't anticipate selling very quick.
Not really, you're making.
He's selling the lots, not really the house.
Well, I, I mean, really, it depends.
It's going to be a lot, I can't really say the house is worth it, you know, anyway.
I'm seeing that, where is this?
It's kind of a wash.
Yes, sir, down with that street.
Yeah, I'm like, hey.
It's got a boat to sign it.
Yeah, a boat, the house right up there.
Kind of a cross from Joe.
Yeah.
Yellow bench, yeah.
Well, if you took the house, yeah.
Oh, either way, the lot has to be, you know, whether the house, there or not.
There are two lots there. I'm seeing a big sad lot.
Well, we, we won't do anything without your knowledge, so. We can give you ninety days, it wouldn't be a problem.
Wouldn't get you to swear and bring the forms, like we use in management today, so take it down, or sell it, just with, take it back, so. I don't know if I could have it in ninety days, or if I was to.
Well, again, if you make the progress, you know.
Well, I will be getting stuff out of it, though, I want to bring my wind.
Okay.
Because I'm a sure, we did, until I do something.
Okay.
I think you come down and know it now, I'm making my wind right now.
Is it ordered up and stuffed where it's at least safe, that works, it doesn't even have a back wall.
Yes, it fell off, like the door fell in.
Years ago, it was like that.
Steve, can you tell us the condition of this house?
Well, I've got one thing, just like, my hill was down, and I wasn't seeing, do nothing.
As far as.
Coming down, they could carry the lawn board, and different, yeah, on that.
As far as the, the aspect of this house currently, uh, I mean, listen.
Even vagrants.
Well, vagrants and varmints.
Nobody gets hurt, you know, you know, sit in there and.
Like the block, oh, like, like I say, that force can be torn down, oh, there anyway, that force got built, so they're getting down the doorway, or people away there, I can't.
Yes, we're excited, some kids, they're like playing there, and.
Like it is, like it is, like it is, like it is.
Yeah.
That's why I was trying to talk about that.
You didn't give them a day of time?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's do it.
Ninety days.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next on the list is Eduardo G. Penney, seven zero five North Fourteenth, part of block three, all of block four, block nine. You say that, Yin, Yin, what?
Diamond.
Diamond, that is it? But no. Mr. Penney, are you present?
Which is that in the pictures? Second?
Yeah. Me.
Yes. I think Mr. Pena lives...
I think it's in New York.
Is that the little rock up?
Yes. And we've tended to contact some real times.
Nobody here for any comments on this property?
No.
Alright. Say what?
We would like to move forward on that property. What we plan on doing is, uh, well, I don't know if we can actually condemn it today, we would be able to condemn it on the, not this next meeting, but the next.
Yeah, this is just kind of a, a...
A preliminary.
Preliminary. Not every woman wants to represent her property in common policy.
Right.
So we're not gonna act it condemn anybody.
Well, it's like Mr. Owens, you know, he... Yeah, and he wanted a little more time, so, and we can give him a little more time, I mean, we're not trying to jerk this away from him, you know, but we would like something addressed, so...
That's what I'm saying, you know.
Right. Oh, right.
Not present, so... No fine, he hasn't...
Well, what we'll do is, is on the, uh, the first meeting of, uh, February, we'd be able to condemn it. Okay.
Alright, John, and I don't know if I'm gonna say this right enough, Mahalke, three zero eight Strong Avenue, block fifteen, block twenty-two, original edition. John's here.
Yeah, he's not here, but I'm here, and he said that he's gonna put out a roof building and use it as a storage.
Is that the house that's been burned?
Yeah. And it's...
Five, eight, it's alright, although...
How long has this been like this?
Well...
Two years. In our, in our records, it's been like this for two years.
Uh, it's been longer than that.
They burned it nowhere for two thousand six days.
So, I mean, I understand that he'd, he'd like to, to work on this building, but is he, where is he currently? Is, where is Mr.?
Uh, he's in Florida, he's, he's in, uh, there.
In what?
Florida.
In Florida?
Is he moving to Florida?
No, 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 he's working down there.
I do.
And, uh, he's coming back to Florida Fourteenth this month.
Okay, to stay or for a visit?
No, he, he said he's gonna come talk down here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. I mean, considering how it's been two years, and there's no movement on it, I know, I mean, it's not true, but, uh, we would really like him to explain to us what we're gonna do, what he's gonna do, uh, 'cause I don't know that he'd be able to, to fix it up in a state where someone could live in.
No, storage.
Okay, storage, either way, I mean, uh, if he could come talk to Mr. Nixon, and, uh, 'cause, uh, like I say, uh, this would be like a notification, a phone hearing, you might say, uh, but the first weekend, the first Monday in February, uh, we'd make a decision on, and I don't see it being favorable on this house, because currently it's a safety hazard. So... We can give you till, we can give Mr. John, uh, till the first weekend in February, uh, first Monday.
What does it cost us to take, basically, a day off this?
On average, five thousand dollars.
Is that even one landfill cost?
Yes. Landfill, labor, equipment. Uh, I think the next Monday is four. February.
Next meeting?
Yeah. So, we appreciate you coming. If you can get Mr. John down here to address this, we'd appreciate it.
Of course.
Otherwise, it doesn't look very favorable for the fourth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, Kevin Bowden, nine zero five acute avenue, part of block ten, block six, Bowden Edition.
Uh, I had talked to Kim, and, uh, Kelly's over there, and, uh, he is, he wants to surrender this property to the team. So, he, he emailed me, uh, with the letter, and I was gonna give it to Pat, if I can find it, and, uh, let you contact him. Make that through that to me.
We can get that to you.
Well, why is this for a big university?
Oh, that's here, about there. But, uh... But, uh...
I don't know, you see?
You okay, Steve?
Now, the only risk, I mean, this is really, if you go through the process and tear it down, place a lien on the property, ultimately, this is, you know, either you just have a lien property that sits there forever, or you get the property back yourself, this, uh, you're saying, so, in many ways, it's positive to get the property directly, as long as there's not any, you know, oil dumps or something like that, we need to make a, you know, review of the property condition, because other than, the house obviously is pretty poor condition, so it's hard to tell.
Yeah. Basically, he's donating it, 'cause, so we can draw, uh...
How's that work, if you've got liens against the Georgia, you know, things like that?
Well, we need to see.
Get that to the title?
We just have to be, see.
Well, the note said that you're charging taxes for paying up the debt.
Right.
If it could be under, five thousand dollars, then we don't need that money back, you know? So for us to take from him, it costs us money.
Right.
We'd prefer to take them down. The goal should be is have them, they have the property down, condition, and of course, you can, we have the sets of lines and penalties, but we'll be coming back with you as new ordinance, matter of, it's the seventh feet, I don't think we're seventh feet, I don't look in, but if we can do it on that meeting, we can adopt a new ordinance, but basically, we'd, uh, you know, we could take them through, give some options, go through municipal board, write tickets, file them, in addition to that, I mean, ultimately, we wanna push people to maintain their property, so, breed their animals, because, you know, it costs about grand to pop, I mean, that's what you got your buddy for house demolition, we're already, this is only, you know, for the first month of January, he's talking about six houses here, get the plans of ours.
So, okay, the next house is, uh...
Max Smith, Jeanette Johnson, five zero one South Broadway, block ten, block sixty-five, original edition. Another one?
Well, we've talked to, uh, yeah, relatives, yeah. Okay, we've talked to one of his relatives, and, and, uh, they had indicated that they are going to, uh, remove some of, well, the, the ports that had fallen down, and, and try and clean up some of the area, and, uh, anyway, just like the gentleman, Mr. Owens, we indicated we could give them ninety days to, to make a showing on that property. And the next one is, uh...
Helen Water, Helen F. Black, five zero nine South Broadway, block six, block sixty-five, original edition.
Gotcha.
My name is Tim Roll, I'm on, on behalf of this board of the house, and, uh, what they're gonna probably do is, you know, city, I've traveled about five thousand, they're probably gonna tear it down, and, uh, what they're gonna do is, this is just a flood zone, and you can't rebuild, but if you leave the foundation, can you rebuild?
I don't think so, it is, it's not like your grandfather did, the thing is, is it's a flood zone.
Yes.
So, anything that goes back in has to be elevated, I believe, five foot in that area.
Eight foot.
Well, I'm not sure.
No, that, that would be common.
Right, I mean, you'd have to do a survey and see how low it used to be, if it's out of flood zone, so basically, you're looking at putting something like this on still, you know, I mean, you're talking...
About five feet?
Well, between five and ten feet, depending on, on the location of that house, and, and the highest part of the, I think, the hundred year flood zone, so, I mean, we would just have to look at it and see that location versus where the flood zone is, so, I mean, anything you do to it, I mean, if you take it down, it's down, I mean, whether you have a footprint or not, it's gonna have to be elevated.
Elevated.
Yes, sir.
The exception to that was the old Mount Pleasant Church, which is now J.C. Church.
Yes.
They rebuilt that and the footprint of the old church.
Right.
They went before P and Z, and P and Z approved.
Yes.
So, that's not out there, and those people, we're rebuilding the footprint.
I understand what you're saying.
Different private, versus a business, 'cause you can build in a flood zone, a business.
Right, maybe it was maybe in that church.
You know, our, our goal is to keep people safe, you know, and, and if someone's living in a flood zone, uh, and they have new flood laws, uh, you know, we need to, uh, try and get the residences out of there, I mean, again, commercial churches and stuff like that would have to fall under different spheres, is that correct?
Yeah, flood, I'm not sure if they recall this, female flood and half laws, but it's, that's a complicated period, but, bottom line, like you said, it's, if it's a flood plain, you're building up there, you know, it's...
Okay, what if they just start remodeling, get it up the code?
That would be fine, if we could see some progress.
Well, the problem there is, it's in, it's in the floodway, uh, the female regulation states that, uh, whatever the property value of it is, and I'm, I'm guessing it's fifteen hundred dollars, you can only spend forty-nine percent of that fifteen hundred dollars to rebuild it. Now, that's, that's a female regulation.
The government's to, to rebuild it or to, to...
Remodel it.
Red fisher, or what?
You want it?
Red fisher, or fifty dollars people?
Well, you could, there is, you know, like...
What, what is there intended to do with this house, long term?
Uh, well, it's gonna try to remodel it, tear it down and remodel it, rebuild it on the foundation, but since you can't build on the foundation, you have to lift it up five feet, or ten feet, before you can rebuild.
And you gotta spend like, seventy, eighty dollars.
I guess.
Well, I mean, what was their ten, even if they rebuild a, a brand new house?
I guess, rent it out.
Okay.
But I probably won't, because they live in Virginia, they're not coming back, so they probably just rent it out.
I understand.
I said, I'm gonna talk to them, and I'll leave here tomorrow, see what they wanna do, but I don't know about the flood plants, you know, the foundation, you have to lift it up, you can't rebuild on the same foundation, and you can't spend no more than forty-nine dollars, you know, so, things that don't look good either way. If you remodel it, you can't spend no money on it, and if you lift it up, you gotta tear it down, but if you can rebuild, but it's gotta be over ten feet, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Well, that would be your time about thirty.
Right, yeah, certainly, I mean, but you're looking at, at least five, I think, right there in that area.
Well, to give you an idea, the, uh, I'm just, what the name is, they had it right about six feet, and that's at the end of the flood zone like this.
I don't know, it's at that flood zone. So, so they have ninety days to decide, or?
Well, uh, probably till the, the first meeting in February, which would be on the fourth of August.
February fourth? Okay, well, I'll call and see what's going on, what they're gonna do.
Okay.
And, um, I guess I'll be back down here on the fourth.
Thank you, sir, thank you for showing up.
Alright, so, building permits, please, you have those in one seat?
Yes, yes. Uh, Kenneth Eastman, at, uh, thousand and thirty-six, uh, I'm playing two, quarter by twenty-eight foot, uh, set of cabins, I think a store building was here.
I don't know if it matters, but the button block, I'm pretty sure it's one from that
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it's, uh, not necessarily.
Yeah. Uh, I had one come in today, uh, nine hundred and eight, three hundred and six, want to put in a, uh, ten by seventeen foot store building.
That's it?
That's it.
No problem, Steve?
No, but that couldn't be followed, you know, it couldn't say...
I think, did you permit that to the judge?
Thank you.
I'll take your say on.
Alright.
Alright, discuss, consider, take action, it's part of monthly and annual activity
Alright, uh, for the month of December, we had a total of fifteen arrests, made six accidents, three hundred and four called service, citations, a little over six thousand dollars in court fines. For December, we had a few families donate three thousand dollars to us, which we handed out to, uh, people of need or martyrs that were obeying the law, so, there were several families that got a hundred dollar bill for Christmas, and this stuff, so we even got a cake out of it, some little girl had his cake, so if you want any cake from them, please partner. For December, I was aware, once I was aware of the bus incident, both my day officers knew about it, and we tried deliberately to go out there and wait for it. On behalf of me, I was told of the bus, I figured it was Oakland, that was stopping, but Oakland bus never did stop, so I did not know there was another bus. Paint Rock was stopping, I know about the Hounders and Oakland, but not Paint Rock, so, um, but my, both day, both my day officers know about it, I know about it, we just been out there, so, um, other than that, that's it for December. Any questions on December? No?
Okay.
Two thousand and eight, we had a total of one hundred and forty-two arrests, ninety-two accidents, um, forty-one hundred, forty-one, four thousand one hundred and eighteen called for service, um, eight hun, eight hundred and eighty-six citations were issued. Um, eight hun- eight hundred and eighty-six citations were issued with, um, over eighty-six thousand dollars in court fines. So, about an average year for us. Anybody have a question on your year totals?
Anybody? Go ahead.
I think some cars put a lot more miles than other cars.
That just depends, sometimes, um, a vehicle gets broken, that's sure. So, that vehicles getting double mileage. Um, a lot of models of vehicles will get break down, so a lot of older vehicles, like thirty-one hundred, thirty-one or two, they have less mileage because they get break, they break down a lot. So, and there's some officers that push over more than others. So, it just depends on, you know, the house will depend on transport, you know, if we have to transport to Midland, Osher, San Angelo, Abilene, just depends off armed duty and stuff like that. Train, also train.
Was that when you said training?
Training. Some of them, we have to go to Bristol, San Diego, train, so. That's a toll on also.
The hell? All right. Thanks, sir. All right, here's the city of industry's daily weekly report, please.
Uh, what's this, uh... Oh, yeah, I'll get you some more. And as we were talking this, this, uh, earlier with Ken, uh, we have a, a raw water line running from Ivy. Uh, it's gonna be closed, uh, from seven January to twenty-first of January. Uh, we've already gone, we're using Ballenger Lake water right now. So, uh, we've already shut that line down, they were doing maintenance on the tank that he was talking about, the bottle. And, um, so, we're, we're, you're drinking Ballenger water, fresh Ballenger water, so.
I knew that was gonna be...
From the lake.
So, Tommy, can I ask a question about the water real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we, we just sold our home, bought a new one, East River Seven, Five and Light Fifth Street is our new one. On Ninth Street, our water was extremely, just horrible, constantly. I can bet for this. Five and Light Fifth Street, I feel like I'm in Dallas, Texas, with the most wonderful water in the world. What's the deal?
How can I answer that?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
She deals under the water tower.
There you go.
Well, I was wondering, I was wondering if you actually had anything to do with it.
That's part of her...
You could quit, you're gonna raise our cost. We're talking, we're raising our cost.
Listen, I'm just, I will never, ever, ever continue to conduct City Water, I, yeah, it is fantastic.
I'm gonna do it.
It's a difference in laundry, showering, just, it's just safer. Do I need to move another block after we run, I heard you tell them.
No, they get, they get... Well, I'm thinking we might charge you more for that.
When you say better, what's better?
It is Texas, crystal clear, and on Ninth Street, regardless of the laundry detergent, fabric softener, whatever we use. Our, you know, our towels, women's clothing, was just kind of rotten and stiff. And I get over here and do my personal...
Well, to answer your question, some of the, some of the, it depends on the pipes that, that are...
Like, years ago, they replaced lines behind your house, didn't you?
Right.
Well...
And they did replace one block over here with a jet, because my lawn be hot that good.
And we have progress, we need all of our plumbing, if that might...
And, and it might, because in the house on Ninth Street, you may have had, uh, galvanized in the house?
Quest.
Okay, I mean, uh, uh, yeah, because the water coming out of the, uh, the plant is the same.
Right.
You know, it just depends on the pipe that it's sitting in until it's used, from the plant to your house.
Okay.
So, that's why they, they ended up going with Poly for a bulk of, of the city, uh, because it, it never rusts.
I need some water.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna move it over. Okay. Uh, Ballenger Livestock, Ballenger Junior Livestock Association, uh, that, they have the, they're working at the community center or have been doing things at the community center. There's a, an agreement that was put in place years ago that if, uh, they bought the material for improvements for the community center, we would, uh, uh, try and provide the labor. And, uh, so, they purchased or, or ended up getting a bunch of panels going to the inside of the, of the community center. We'll be installing those, uh, fifteen January. Now, it was my, we, there was, we were supposed to put them up earlier, and I, I got a little confused and, and thought fifteen January was the date. They were trying to get it before the next, uh, show, which is coming up on the eleventh, I believe. And, uh, anyway, so, I, I had it on our schedule for fifteen, so.
What kind of panel?
Just some, some, I believe it's our panel, you panel.
Yeah, it's, it's just, I can say the whole, they're, they're actually putting them up, you can scratch that.
Okay, well, we won't be doing that anymore. So, uh, part of our, our audit finding, uh, from our last audit was, uh, our, our last inventory had been done in two thousand and six. So, uh, we are updating our inventory, our capital asset inventory, which is basically anything over five thousand dollars. And, uh, we should be finished with that on the fifteenth of January. And, uh, we started a committee to amend, not amend, update our, our personnel policy, our, our HR policies. Um, so, we've got this committee, uh, and we set the date of, uh, fifteen March for the first draft, to, uh, have it ready so we can take it before the council, the all of which have, and, um, I'm giving you, uh, milestones that we're trying to reach. Uh, who's all on the committee for that? It's gonna be Melissa, uh, Gads is heading it up, Anita's on there, uh, some of our supervisors, and I, I don't know exactly all the people, uh, Melissa's heading that up, so... I should say mostly employees, there's a session. Oh, yeah, all employees, yeah, yeah.
Can you make sure she makes contact with me about the police?
Yeah, because there's a difference.
Uh, positions?
Okay.
On the hand book?
Sure.
Because I would never make contact with you about it.
Yeah. She will, I, I know, we've kind of waited until after the first year to get this kicked off.
No, that's fine, I just wanna make sure that...
Yes, we will make sure you are involved. Uh, we're also, uh, we have a committee, uh, looking at the updates for the ordinance. And I know the police has, have, have been involved in that as well, they have a bunch of, uh, uh, updates that they would like to have reviewed. Um, now, we're looking at fifteen February for our first run through the, the vote that, that we've been, been given so we can, uh, go forward with it on, uh, right into the council. Fifteen February is the date we're shooting for.
Uh, we had a conference calls or conferences to discuss this, I'd sure like to be a part of some of that instead of just handing me a hundred and fifty pages or, or maybe even say approved it, because I, I, I know our code book is in a shambles, and that's putting it politely, to be honest with you.
Right.
You could spend six years redoing it, literally.
Well, okay, we have an updated version.
Correct.
And, now, if we get that to you, will you be, when would you be able to, to cycle through it?
It depends how much it is, I, I said it, I like, I like to hear...
Entire ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, I'd like to hear your thought processes on what you're changing, helps me figure out what you're trying to achieve.
Right.
I mean, ordinance is, you can do an ordinance, if y'all recall how we did our ordinance, for example, on the gamering. Remember how many changes we made to that, you know? I mean, it's, it's not a one size fits all, so a lot of times it's what our wants, what your staff wants, what y'all want to achieve, what will...
Y'all...
Your city, you know, so sometimes it's not just an ordinance, it's your ordinance. And so, it's easier for me, if you can just note all the changes and call me and we'll go through them all. That, that's just something, that way at least I understand where it comes from. Mm-hmm, yeah. Where it comes, yeah.
Um, we were, we have a committee to update the charter, and, uh, we need, uh, committee members. Uh, we were looking at hoping to get our first draft about fifteen April. Uh, uh, we need...
We need to vote on the names?
Yes.
Yes, that happens to be on the agenda for next meeting.
Are y'all ready for that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So, it will be on the next agenda for the names.
Stella, if you could stay after, please, I'm, I'm just trying to get hold of you.
Uh, I'm probably gonna disreel Pat Fisher, because he thinks this charter, we need to do it in segments, don't you, Pat? Rather than the entire charter, for the voters to vote on?
Well, are you talking about how, what changes we're gonna make?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think what we need to do is, is look at the changes that we desire to make, and then ultimately, we'll, we won't put on all changes at a charter election, we'll decide on which ones we want to put forward.
So, you're gonna stretch this out to several November elections, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it could, sometimes you may never make those changes, some of them.
Well, I'm gonna read you something from the wisdom of the ages, okay? We also had a smart attorney back in these days. Section seventeen oh nine in our charter. Submission of Charter to electors. The Charter Commission in preparing this charter finds and decides it is, it is impractical to segregate each subject so as to prevent a yes or no vote on the same. For the reason that the charter is so conscripted that in order to enable it to work and function, it is necessary that it should be adopted in its entirety. I agree with that premise.
So, you want to readopt it in its entirety again? I've never seen anybody do that, but it means you can.
Then you do.
What, no, you, you have to do that when you adopt it.
I, I just think if you're segmenting it, if you're gonna stretch it out maybe for five years.
I, I don't know, I mean, the reality is, you adopted the charter, you, is he talking about that's in the original charter?
That's in the, the last charter of sixty-three or whatever, Tommy?
Yes, sir.
That's, that was your first charter, correct?
There's only been one, yeah.
I mean, that's, of course you adopted it in its entirety.
That's not our first charter, is it, though?
I would figure it is, that's...
Well, but either way, I'm still agreeing with you.
I, 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 go ahead, I don't care, really, I mean, it doesn't make any sense, if you can't do it, if you can't do it. I mean, I don't know how you, if you're gonna readopt the entire charter in its entirety, the council, they could vote not to vote at it all. I mean, that, that would make...
In some cases, you would get either all or none, right?
I've never seen a charter election, and I, I'll be honest with you, I've only done three or four of them, but we've only picked the key provisions that want to change our charter, changed it.
And that's where this would be.
I mean, I, I, I don't allow us to do it, I mean, if you set up the entire charter on the...
Well, whatever, Christie confirmed, she, she's sure of the whole thing.
It helped to have you want to do it, I'm just, I'm just gonna point out the provisions that you can change, you're welcome to change whatever you want to change.
I deeply appreciate that.
That's right, committee, Dr. Steve. I know, I remember that. Several months ago, we were approached by Mr. Stankworth to, uh, uh, see if we could work on, on finding someone to update the fountain at the Pioneer Plaza. Uh, we had found a, a, a local contractor who specializes in rock work. Uh, and we have asked him for pricing, and, uh, Mr. Mr. Stankworth has agreed to pay for half of his cost. And, uh, he's, 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 he's given us a design, uh, she's looked at it, she approves it, we are, are looking at it as well. Uh, and we would like to go forward with him working on the fountain.
What's your projected code?
Ten thousand dollars total.
What do we have to go, uh, Pat provides, what does it have to be?
Fifty thousand. One fifty.
And, uh, since, uh, private individual, we're partnering with them, uh, we're kind of taking her lead on, it was, it's her property. I don't know if it's still her property, but it was maybe donated by her, by Mr. Stankworth. And, and, uh, uh, we would like to, uh, help her pay, uh, to get that fountain refurbished. And, uh, it could be on the agenda next time, uh, we'd like to have a kickoff meeting around the, January the fifteenth, uh, I believe that's right. Uh, and we can, but I would like to have something at the next meeting where we can, y'all can vote to let this proceed or not. And we'll have a, we have a a computer graphic that we can show next, next, next meeting. And, uh, proceed with the fountain construction. Where they're gonna use local rocks, uh, we, there was a building torn down, part of the warehouse, uh, they're gonna build the retaining wall, they're gonna take out everything that's there currently, and, and build it up in rock that is similar to the, to the, uh, building side walls that are currently there. And, uh, he can go to the old Ballenger Lake and find some boulders and utilize some of the, uh, what am I looking for, natural, natural...
Natural floor and form.
Right, natural boulders and rocks, and he's got a great, you know, fountain in this, this, this way. So, that's using a lot of the natural rock and stone for here, uh, so, but in the next meeting, I'll have that, so y'all can vote on that, to go forward. So, with the local person? Yes, uh, Jeff Earnshaw, which is, uh, Clay and Debbie Earnshaw's son. He runs, uh, a company that, and then, a lot of what they do is stonework our fountains and outside architecture. Uh, let's see. We've had trouble finding CDO drivers for the city. So, in, in order to be proactive, we've, uh, asked Mr. John Bankworth, who was a former special ed teacher, uh, I think he taught for twenty-five years, he was also a, uh, driving instructor for a lot of the, for the high school, uh, worked with Mr. Robert Wilson for, yeah, driver's ed, yes. Uh, he has agreed to come and work for us part-time from four o'clock to five o'clock every day, starting Wednesday, to see if we can get our employees' CDO certified so they can go take the test. And then we can, and he will work with them, uh, as far as the driving, uh, you know, so we can try and get some of these employees certified, uh, CDO, get them a CDO license. Uh, you know, we're, we're trying to improve, improve the employee. And, uh, I realize that sometimes when you get home at five o'clock, life happens, and kids need your attention, and the wife needs your attention, so some of them aren't able to study as intensively as they need to, to take some of these tests, because it's becoming increasingly difficult to get your CDO. So, we are gonna start this class Wednesday from four... So, we are gonna start this class Wednesday from four to five with a, a driving instructor, so.
And it's free for them?
Free for them.
Do they get paid?
They get paid, so they have to pay attention.
And will we have some kind of something inviting saying they have to promise to work for the city a year?
The only real requirement I'm gonna ask them is if, because we will agree to pay for the test, and, uh, if they don't pass the test, they need to pay us back out of the paycheck, uh, and if they.
But Christie made a bet for it, get a CDO license, and they immediately go work at the hall, but.
Yeah, that's a good point. And, and I don't mind that, part of my job is to help my employees grow and, and get them, I mean, if, if they can leave me tomorrow for a better job, I, you know, I, I wish them well, you know, I, I try to, I want to grow my people. And, uh, I don't, part of that too is, a lot of the trucking companies that require CDO, they also require two years' experience, not all of them, and I realize that, but it helps, I mean, it's very, kind of difficult for our company to put them on insurance if they don't have two years' experience. So, it requires them to stay with us for a while to get that experience. Just because you have a piece of paper doesn't necessarily mean you can drive that truck. So.
I've got mixed emotions about that.
No, I understand, but, you know.
I think, I think we don't want to become, everybody's got a CDO license.
That is true.
I mean, if they get CDO and they leave and don't grow a field, okay, we gotta track that, but they don't come in long enough to get their CDO and go. So, I'm wondering, will we have some, in there that should help them out?
Problem is, I can't really force somebody to.
What you, you deducted from the paycheck when they leave, the amount of whatever the school was, like, lots of people want to get their, you know, say, a broker piece, a person, and I'd like you, and I'd like for you to come to work for mine.
And, and actually, and we can, simply like, if, if, if they leave within six months, we can deduct that school.
Yeah.
But I don't know, we're really.
We have to have the grant with them.
Right.
Yeah, we need an agreement.
We've done it with a lot of our place officers, like training things, we'll send our officers a sign agreement, basically. The only hitch is, it's, it is beyond our budget, the problem, because you have to pay a minimum wage, you don't have to check when you leave.
Right.
Say three hundred bucks, you have to lose pay a minimum wage when they leave your credit.
So, we can, we can draw that up?
We have people starting on Wednesday.
Well, that doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna take the test, so.
Is this all booked downtown?
Yes.
Is the broke time including that?
Nope, it's all, they're gonna be sitting in chairs, Kat's gonna go with that.
Any guys broke time training on OJ team?
Well, there's gonna be something, because once you get your permit, we're, we're gonna utilize these people in, in some of the vehicles that we have. I mean, it's not gonna be him driving to San Angelo and back, it's just gonna be on the job, period.
Well, when we get his permit, you have to have a CDO driver with you.
Of course.
So, you got two people in one truck.
Right. But if we're working towards getting our CDO, we'd like to, uh, you know, we want to illegal as much as, you know, possible, and right now, we don't have CDO drivers required. And we need to consider changing this date, uh, if we need to look at if we want to change the date at the next meeting, it's on Martin Luther Jr. Day.
Well, I tell you, twenty seconds is not good to be in this festival, man. I got another replacement in Marston Lake, that's named on Mr. American. I don't have time to be on twenty-first personally, that's, until, I have to work for this. Twenty-first, sorry, because Martin Luther, that's what we are next meeting.
It's a city holiday, is all, I mean, it's no problem, well, I mean, maybe a state as well.
It's a state, yeah.
Most of the government's not, like, I work with the government employees, but they take off, but I don't take off.
School's for adults, but it works at city.
No, school's not out, so, I mean, personally, I have no problem, been here five-thirties, uh, for the meeting.
Let's do it, on the twenty-first.
Right, you're still in it?
Okay.
You okay with it?
What do you think, sort of, okay with it? I bet you do.
I think it's not okay with Tuesday either.
Or do we not do that meeting and try to put a little bit more on the seventeenth and then not do it?
Uh, it's kind of a night, but maybe, middle of the day meeting, I mean, that one'd be kind of quick.
I don't want to.
I don't like middle of the day meeting.
I'd rather do it on the twenty-first. I'd rather just keep the multiple calls on the first, make this in peace as fast as possible. I do need to get back to work, that kind of fact check.
Yes, I do. All right, we'll, we'll just leave it the way it is, uh, twenty-first. And I'm finishing. Right, here we go, first of future dinner, I should say, county. Oh, I know you don't. Here, telling stories.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Do what?
I'll do it tomorrow.
Uh, TML usually puts on a training for new elected officials, uh, it's this Friday, the eleventh, so being at such short notice, uh, it's big with Pat, as far as him doing one four times, but we would have to agree, man. Are you on? Okay, I don't know. And I'm not agreeing. Awesome. Yeah. So, what about the rest of us that haven't been, I mean?
It wouldn't bother me, for sure. This is a bad time of the year for me to go down there and. No, I'm saying, that'd be great, I'm saying, that'd be great.
It's not about a retreat, but having that training, like, a retreat type.
When would be a good time for that? Just so I know.
Yeah, I don't care, we can go up then, as long as it's as comprehensive as you're on.
I mean, I'm gonna pay up all meetings, Saturday, that's what, I don't know, just to take a three, four, five hours to do this, so, I would talk about that, but, going over kind of the, uh, open meetings, training, ethics, disclosure laws, I wanted to kind of go over with y'all, see if I could put together, you know.
Can we, can we get our money back?
You know, I, I think you can.
No, we're gonna.
I think we can go.
Yeah, this isn't a substitute, this is a.
Yeah, this is already.
You can't go, this was just what I talked to y'all about before, about if we did a retreat, I think it would be good to talk about some of the issues, uh, some stuff y'all are new, and even what you.
Yeah, well, I'm still.
Yeah, I definitely.
And so, that's just one of the topics, you know, as far as what I was concerned, as far as, you know, Tommy talked about, you know, bell setting, things like, you know, y'all take that time to talk about what's your goals for the year of the, but make it a productive meeting as far as discussing, you know, the, uh, different disclosure laws and, uh, our charter, and kind of go through kind of everything that, uh, that I haven't had a chance as a council to go over with y'all. I'll talk to you, individual council members has issues that come up, but to have that session, just, you know, I don't know how long it'll take, maybe not more than an hour or two, but depends on any questions you got, what you want to talk about, um, you know, but then I think there's lots of other issues that, uh, y'all can talk about as far as what y'all goals and things like that. But I mean, you did, you know, four, five hour, three, four hour, I have no idea what it'd take, but you could do it for, you know, nine, noon, have a lunch, if it fizzles out after lunch, it does, it doesn't, you go on for an hour or two more and call it that.
What do we need to do then, if that happens?
I'll coordinate with you guys.
What do you want to do?
Uh, the February.
You take, you take off the other time, Steve.
Always. My beautiful wife.
Well, I should be available any Saturday in January, if you're seeing someone work Saturday.
Any Saturday in January for work, that'll be fine.
Okay. So far, I'm on group.
All right, and you keep that in mind, and talk about it here in the next week or so. Good evening. Melissa, do a turn.
I'll make a move.
Okay. I'll pay with the top.